I never got to see their blogs. It'd be interesting to see what churches have in the systems. Many of the big ones.
Oh, yeah.
Call this regular meeting to order.
Mayor Querom.
Here.
Councilmember Swanson.
Here.
Mavry.
Here.
Gomez.
Here.
Newman.
Please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance. We are by the United States of America. And we are called the cause of sins, one nation under God, in the Lord. The Lord is our Father.
So before we get going on public comment tonight, I just want to make an announcement. Some of you might be here to address the ordinance that we were going to address tonight. This morning, I had that pulled from the agenda. The city council will not be discussing it. We will not be voting on it, and we will not be looking at it anytime soon. So that said, I will open up to a public comment. If anybody has anything they want to say. Just need for you to say your name.
Okay. I'm Rick Brooks, and I'm just here as a citizen voter, whatever. I've been sort of looking at what happens after a major catastrophic event or occurrence. And just by way of background, I've been through this a few times. I grew up in Kansas where there are tornadoes. I experienced quite a few of them the day I went to college. Sixteen houses were destroyed in my neighborhood. And more recently, I was within four hours of the tsunami in Asia, I got a call from Sri Lanka, and that day, 35,000 people died and a million lost their homes. And four days later, I was flying to Japan to attend a United Nations disaster relief program and spent the next six months and then actually total in about six years, and six is a curve, we raised $6 million and worked with 15,000 villages in knowing how do you respond to an event that no one has much experience with at all? And what we're experiencing now in Princeton and the United States and the world is somewhat similar, not quite the same. But one reason I'm here is I wanted to, I became concerned of how we're addressing from the top down and the bottom up some of the challenges that we're facing with this virus and responses to it. And I want to suggest a couple of things, not so much, not only for the city to do, but for city and representatives of different stakeholder groups in this issue, which is pretty much everybody. But I want to suggest that after doing a little informal investigation, I want to bring some of my own experience and sort of describe what might work well to help everybody who wants to do the right thing to be able to do that in a structure that has credibility and is effective, but also responds to both the needs and the resources that are available. So a couple of things that I can tell you about. I went on Saturday and Sunday, went to about seven or eight restaurants and small businesses and hotels and larger businesses and organizations just to see how are they responding to the orders they're getting from either their corporate headquarters or from someone, government agencies and so on. And I've read lots and lots of social media posts and like all of you, I've read and listened to the news and watched the news. I do think there are some things that I would strongly encourage us to do in Princeton and Bureau County. And based on experiences that I've had, and I've spent my career in social and behavior change efforts dealing with often public health crises. So I want to suggest some things. For example, in a situation like this, people are afraid, they're anxious, they don't know what's going to happen, they worry about things that they shouldn't worry about and shouldn't worry about. They want to know, who can I turn to for accurate information? And they turn to people they trust first, either for accurate information or not. And a lot of times, they turn to people who know things that they don't know or that the person seeking information thinks they know. So it is our job as citizens, voters, service providers, government and so on, to see if we can reduce the distance between this tremendous need they have for information and consolation and compassion and solutions to what they're not even sure what the problems are yet. So what I want to suggest is that we think about a, some examples that help us, all of us, solve the problems and make the most of this opportunity to reduce the risks and the genuine dangers in a way that's as realistic and compassionate as possible. There aren't good examples. So number one, I encourage that we all look for people who seem to be doing well. My experience shows in any system like a town or an organization, there's three different ways communication networks. There's the official and formal, which is government rules, regulations, notices, requirements, and so on, the official and formal. The second is the informal, which is once you know who is supposed to be on paper doing things, you say, who can really get it done? And often the informal, for example, in a school, is not the principal, not the not principals, it's usually the school secretary, who knows who's doing what and who realistically what's possible to do. In a neighborhood, it's often, or in a corporate organization, it's often not the CEO, it's the assistant to the CEO, or it's the people that you go to and I say, I know that so-and-so is, that's his or her responsibility, but if you really want to get it done, go to her or him. The third communication network is the underground, which is people who talk to other people about the third party, wishing something different would be done. And the underground is real, it is people who spread what they hear, rumors, both good and bad. So what, when we look at situations like this, and I'm going to end soon, what we want to do is we want to know what are the official formal organizations' communication networks required to do and how much flexibility do they have? What are the informal networks doing right now? And I think there are people here tonight who will show us all what they're beginning to do. I assume that almost all of us are trying to do the right thing, the good thing, the best that we can. And lastly, we also want to recognize that there is an underground network of people who don't know where to turn, and we need to take them into account. So my fundamental strong recommendation is, we don't assume that everybody knows everything about everything, all right? We should expect that the health department and the emergency folks know a lot about public health and what you can and should do in an emergency and respond to the most current, up-to-date information about the virus, what to do to prevent it, reduce its potential exposures and so on. That is most important. My personal and professional opinion is, we don't have to, we shouldn't rely on the health department to tell us about all kinds of other parts of what a whole person, a whole family, a whole neighborhood, a whole community needs to know. How do we deal with what's happening right now in the short term? And I suggest we think about two weeks in the short term. How do we come up with solutions and problems for the next two weeks? And then we plan for the intermediate and long term. And the way we plan for that is, we have a consortium of government and private sector and other organizations who are all doing the best they can in their sector. I saw some businesses, I went to Culvers, they had a sign on the door that said, we're aware of the virus, here's what we're doing, here's what we know, here's what our corporate headquarters are suggesting that we do. I didn't see that in every business. A lot of businesses are just keeping in business as long as they can until they're absolutely ordered to quit, all right? And they want to do right by everybody, but they can't. So what I'm saying is, let's think about the needs of people, not only to prevent passing the virus or getting it, but what happens when, you know, families are at home? Two things happen, not only families. People get lonely, they get more depressed than they may already be, more anxious, they do things that they probably don't want to do, they don't know what to do. They need social support. We need to promote that. Funny while trying to maintain social distance, but there are ways to do that. Secondly, when people are at home with their kids, there's the risk of cabin fever. After, all of you who have had kids know about this, pretty soon, you're out of patience. What do we do to help them? You know, how do we let them release the energy that they and their kids have? So we need to think about that. We need to think about who needs psychological and social support, how do we facilitate that in which of these formal informal networks? So I could go on for a long time. We need to look for strengths and resources as well as needs and problems. We need to have the patience and the compassion and the spiritual to put up with people's anxiety and anger and come up with a system that allows us to deal with these issues now in the short term and in the long term. So I'm hoping that we all can think about having a consortium, and I think you'll hear a little bit about some examples of it, one in the Quad Cities, for example, not just government agencies, but also private sector agencies. What is the social service network? What are they doing? What is the faith community and churches? What are they doing with each other and inside their own congregations? What's happening in the food system? What's happening in businesses, large and small? Not only businesses who are losing their income, they're learning from their channel of information, the National Chamber of Commerce and the local chambers of commerce and business federations and so on. What's the banking and loan industry doing? How do we get all the people who are doing the best they know in their fields together to say, here's what we identify, here's what we're dealing with, here's what we're doing, here's what we need, and here's what we're learning as we go along? We want to share it with you so that when anyone needs information, they can go to a reliable, trustworthy source. So what I hope you can do, I'm willing to help do this, but if we could organize a mechanism, a system, consortium of agencies who will talk and listen to each other and say, what's happening today among us? Not just with the germs and the virus and/or bureaucracy in our field. We're talking to each other about how we help people deal with the individual, family, neighborhood, community problems and resources that we know we're all dealing with. Nobody's got the total knowledge about this. There are some sources, and it's great to have seen in the past three days, people depend more and more on state and health departments and the CDC. If you ask, who do you turn to who knows? The Centers for Disease Control knows better than anybody. And they have on their website instructions on how to set up an inter-agency structure in the faith community and business community and schools and education. So could we think of all the people who are stakeholders? And my list isn't complete, but we need police and fire, emergency first responders, we need people who represent all of those sectors who have something to offer and have concerns that they want to share with each other. If we could organize that and have a communication system in place that is up-to-date and reliable, and that can only happen if we're working together across disciplines, both government and nonprofit groups and individuals. And we have a way, a really, to give you a creative solution, occurred to me today, the library's closed. Doesn't mean that, who do you go to when you need, you're an information seeker? You go to the reference people at a library. Well, why not put some library staff to work, helping us find what's the current research, the current status of rules and regulations, and who's doing a really good job at XYZ? Anyway, there are, you'll hear some solutions tonight, wonderful, creative ways to deal with these crises, sometimes not consistent with the formal organized structure that we all know we are required to sometimes respond to. But if we can look at resources and assets as well as needs and problems and conflicts and think like this, what do I do? What do I do with people I care about, people who care about me? What do I do to help or reach out to my neighbors in town? That's the silver lining in this. And if we can think and act that way, I think having a consortium of agencies and organizations who talk to each other or communicate each day and have a system to communicate will all be better off. So that's my thinking. Thanks.
Thank you, Rick. Any other public comment tonight? Just need your name.
I'm Anthea Hobenitz, and I'm with Tri-County Opportunities Council and Bureau County Food Pantry. Rick came to see me today, yesterday, to talk to me about the information he shared with you. And again, I'm here to just back up what Rick is saying because things for us as the support services in your community are changing as rapidly as the things you're dealing with. This morning at nine o'clock, our agency was told, here's how to protect yourself, here's how to meet with clientele. By 2:30 today, we were informed that the Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity closed all of our, all community action agencies across the state. So we're faced with, how do we continue to try and meet the needs of the individuals and citizens of your community while we're faced with an ever-changing landscape? Tri-County is going to be closed, but the food pantry is going to remain open, but we're changing how we do things. So for us, it's how do we get the word out to everyone that needs to know that's a citizen of this community, back to what Rick was saying, in that centralized location that can serve as a resource hub for all organization and agencies like mine? Your churches are changing what they're doing, the senior center's changing what it's doing, groups and organizations that meet to support individuals with drug issues, addiction, those meetings are being canceled, things are going on at a rapid pace. So we, to continue to support citizens, I think, need to have that consortium in place and a place where that information can be shared so that it's not rumor, it's not innuendo, it's, oh, did you hear they're closed and they're closed? And it may not be that, you know, I'm sure tomorrow, people will say, oh, the food pantry's closed. No, the food pantry's not closed, Tri-County is closed, but we're doing services in a different way. So because we're going to create more anxiety that way, right? So the Quad Cities has a COVID-19 consortium that they have been meeting, and I think that group meets on a daily basis. It started out being primarily a health-based group, hospitals and health departments and those types of things. But as things are changing, it's drawing in all of those other groups. And I think a similar model as what Rick suggested is something that I would like to see someone take advantage of doing. I myself, now that our hours have been changed, I'm running a food pantry, but I'd be more than willing to be part of something like that. And I know all of the organization wants to keep doing what we can do because you're going to have citizens who are very concerned about how am I going to make it from paycheck to paycheck, right? The city, you guys have said, we're going to defer shut-offs and those types of things. Ameren is going to defer shut-offs and those types of things. But how did your, if I'm not in Facebook and I haven't touched your website, how do I know that you've offered that to me? I may be filled with tremendous anxiety, now my kids are home from school, but where do I go to get that? Not everybody Facebooks, not everybody has the internet in this community. So I think we all have resources and information about how to change what is offered. You know, School Lastic is doing free online courses for families who kids are home, but if you didn't hear that in the news, how are you going to know that? I know that, but how do I get that out to everyone here in this community in one centralized location, at one meeting, where we can all meet and share that? So I'm just supporting what Rick is suggesting and saying, just think about the anxiety that these folks are experiencing. It's more than just the virus.
Thank you. You know, communication is the biggest challenge in today's world, you know, trying all the different avenues that you can communicate through, you know, it's difficult, but I like the idea, you know, a huge umbrella that everything can sit under and have one group and one individual be the spokesperson. So something that we should look at, and I think Rick is a pretty good point person. We have any other public comment? Okay, so we'll go to our City Clerk with the National Hazard Mitigation Plan.
The City of Princeton has been participating with a number of Bureau County villages and cities over the last, actually 10 or 15 years, in the development of a natural hazards mitigation plan. And every so often, the plan is due for an update, and we're going through the update process now. Liddy has met with county officials and other communities throughout Bureau County in the last, well, probably since the 1st of January, I guess there was one meeting last fall. And a few areas have been identified as mitigation areas, about a dozen so far, and it's a requirement of the plan to get these aired and also provide some time for people to respond to these if there's, if anybody's moved to do so. So I'm just going to run down through these very quickly here, these dozen identified areas that we need to improve for our response to natural hazards. One is to identify and complete additional storm sewer improvements throughout the city. This plan also, which is in the packet, also available online, and also available online at the North Central Illinois Council of Governments website, ncicg.org. So the intent is to put our heads together and try to solve some of these problems over the course of, course of time so that these hazards are minimized or maybe even go away. So identifying additional storm sewer improvements throughout the city is one of them. Eliminate sources of inflow and infiltration into the sanitary sewer system. The third one is developing and implementing a program to disconnect some pumps from the city sanitary system. Next one is install additional bypass pumps at the waste and water treatment plant. Next one is participate in the development of a regional storm water management ordinance that will reduce flooding and protect lives, property and environment on a more regional basis. Next is to upgrade tornado sirens. Next is inform residents on the importance of understanding their flood insurance policy. The Princeton doesn't have too much issue with that because we only have a very small fraction of the city that actually is in a FEMA flood plane. However, those that are in the plane can experience some disastrous effects. Next is participate in a regional planning and mitigation activity and encourage the public to be involved. That's part of the focus of tonight. Next is identify and promote the heating and cooling center locations for residents that, to ensure that such facilities are compliant with the American with Disabilities Act standards. Next is to improve the local hazardous weather operations by becoming a storm-ready community. Finally, the last two are to participate in a national flood insurance program, community rating system, and help residents save on flood insurance premiums. And by identifying a lot of the elements of our exposure to floods, we actually could improve our rating with the insurance companies, and those who are participating in national flood insurance could actually get a break on their premiums. And lastly, engage in a regional discussion on the implementation of best practices for activating early warning sirens through, during storm events. And that's more on a rolling system so that there's something connected, for example, if a tornado or a severe storm is coming from west to east, that this system will trigger the westerly communities and continue to roll to trigger the communities in the central part of the county and then into the eastern part of the county on a, on a more broad basis so that we know when the sirens in Sheffield are going off, or we know when the sirens in Winer are going off, and we have a longer response time as do the people that would come after us. So again, these are, these are areas that have been identified by the group of needing solutions. And if, you know, one of the, one of the requirements is to see if anybody has any questions at this time or would like to make a comment on any of these identified problems.
You, Council.
If not at this time, answers are pretty darn thorough. If you don't have responses now, you can respond on the ncicg.org website. And so I would encourage you to, and this report that's in the packet, like I mentioned before, is available off that website. So keep that in mind if you think that there's things that maybe should be added to this list, those are comments that certainly can be added to the plan. Mayor, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Pete. Now I'll go to approval minutes, Commissioner Newman.
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we approve the minutes from our regular council meeting on March 2nd, 2020.
Motion's been seconded. Any comments? Corral.
Councilmember Swanson.
Aye.
Mavry.
Aye.
Gomez.
Aye.
Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querom.
Aye. Now I'll go to approval invoices and City Clerk Nelson.
In the Department of Accounts and Finances, we have invoices this period totaling $46,224.43. In the Department of Streets and Public Improvements, we have invoices totaling $86,444.82. In the Department of Public Safety, we have invoices totaling $178,038.79. And the Department of Public Property and Utilities, we have invoices totaling $643,804.98. Mayor, all council members present have confirmed their reviews of all invoices and now are submitted for disposition.
I move that we approve the invoices as presented.
Second. Motion's been seconded. Comments or corrections? Corral.
Councilmember Swanson.
Aye.
Mavry.
Aye.
Gomez.
Aye.
Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querom.
Aye. Now I'll go to regular business. City Clerk Nelson.
Next on the agenda, we have a suspension of the requirement for a second reading on ordinance O-20-004. This is an ordinance regulating encroachment on the public right-of-way. This is an IDOT request, and the reason we're asking for a suspension of the requirement for a second reading is because IDOT is involved in this. And it would be better to have them keep the ball rolling than to wait till another meeting where they will, they could possibly, I don't want to say this publicly, but drop the ball. So it's probably to our advantage, since this is really an ordinance that is not of too much consequence, but it does, to augment the paperwork for the IDOT, we should consider appeasing them.
I move that we suspend the requirement for a second reading on ordinance O-20-004.
Second. Motion's been seconded. Comments? Corral.
Councilmember Swanson.
Aye.
Mavry.
Aye.
Gomez.
Aye.
Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querom.
Aye.
Next on the agenda is ordinance O-20-004. This is an ordinance relating to the encroachment on the public right-of-way. It's regulations that IDOT has on what you can and cannot put in what they consider the state right-of-way. It's already, I mean, it's a survey, it's a math area, and sometimes people take advantage by putting improper signage, improper pertinences into the right-of-way, and this is their request to have us police that for them. So we'll take a stab at that.
I move that we approve ordinance O-20-004. Second. Motion's been seconded. Comments? Corral.
Councilmember Swanson.
Aye.
Mavry.
Aye.
Gomez.
Aye.
Newman.
Aye.
Querom.
Aye.
All right. Next on the agenda is Resolution R-20-014. This is an IDOT resolution appropriating funds for Americans with Disability Act ramp improvements and resurfacing of parking lanes. This is related to the upcoming resurfacing of Main Street from the courthouse out to the city limits south. Mayor, all council members have reviewed this resolution and submitted for disposition.
I move that we approve Resolution R-20-014.
Second. Motion's been seconded. Comments? Corral.
Councilmember Swanson.
Aye.
Mavry.
Aye.
Gomez.
Aye.
Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querom.
Aye. Thank you, Pete. We'll go to City Manager Report.
Only thing I have to report is the Fire, Fire and Pension Report for January 2020 as well as the Police Pension Report. I would direct you to page 8-1 in the Fire, Fire and Pension Fund for the expended amount for this year totaling $444,158. And a breakdown on the page before has that handy chart that has it all broke down for you there in a more, little bit easier manner to follow. year at $439,037. Very similar breakdown on their chart as well. Any questions?
Okay. Thank you, Teresa. I just got a couple things. First, I have a Child Abuse Awareness Month proclamation to read. Preventing child abuse and neglect is a community problem that depends on involvement among people throughout the community. Child maltreatment occurs when people find themselves in stressful situations without community resources and don't know how to cope. The majority of child abuse cases stem from situations and conditions that are preventable in an engaged and supportive community. Child abuse and neglect can be reduced by making sure each family has the support they need to raise their children in a healthy environment. Child abuse and neglect not only directly harm children, but also increases the likelihood of criminal behavior, substance abuse, health problems such as heart disease and obesity, and risky behaviors such as smoking. Effective child abuse prevention programs succeed because of partnerships created among social service agencies, schools, faith communities, civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community. Therefore, I, Joe Querom, as the Mayor of Princeton, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2020 to be Child Abuse Prevention Month in Princeton, Illinois, and encourage all citizens to support Youth Service Bureau of Illinois Valley and learn about its many programs and resources in our community. Real quick, tomorrow's election day. Don't forget to get out and vote. Primary, Illinois primary. Also, it was announced earlier today, and there are handouts on here on the table, so you can pick one up on your way out. The City of Princeton, actions that we are taking to slow the spread of the COVID-19 virus. Today, at noon, the City of Princeton closed its doors to all of public at noon. We will not allow the public in City Hall between now and March 29th, and at that time we will reevaluate. However, service requests to start utility service or to cancel utility service can be made by calling City Hall at 815-875-2631. Utility payments can be arranged by automatic debit by setting up the account at City Hall online at www.pristin-ellinois.com, by telephone, or the drop box in front of City Hall and in the alley behind City Hall. Due to the possibility of employment hardships in a few industries, restaurants and bars, for instance, that have been mandated to close for a period of time, the City of Princeton will suspend utility shut-offs and will suspend late fees and disconnection fees associated with paying utility bills. Customers still will be liable for the payments of the utilities. This relief will be in effect until at least invoice, will be in effect at least until invoice is incurred through April 30th of 2020, so we'll go to me first on this program. An extension will be announced prior to that date if one is granted. The Fire Department also closed its doors to the public at noon today. They will continue, obviously, to answer 911 calls. Any person with a suspected infection of the COVID-19 virus should not call 911, but rather should call the Illinois Department of Public Health COVID-19 hotline at 800-889-3931 to get guidance on the next step of receiving care with that exposure. The Police Department will respond only to emergency 911 calls in order to limit exposure of our police officers to the COVID-19 virus. And the Prowlty Building also closed its doors today to the public at noon, and they will remain closed until further notice. All scheduled meetings for the building during this time period are canceled. The Princeton Chamber of Commerce will continue to conduct business during normal business hours at 815-875-2616. And the same for the city, or the same for City Hall. We will be, we will be here working at City Hall. Our doors will be closed, however. So as far as this coronavirus, you know, we just need to be diligent as we move forward. You know, you hear all the news reports. Make sure you're washing your hands as often as possible. Keep a separation in public, six to 10 feet is what they're recommending. And I recommend stay home, but, six to, yeah, six to 10 feet apart. So, and I would just, you know, stay home as much as you can. Just be diligent, and, you know, we'll all get through this. It's going to be a trying period, but we will get through this. Do we have any old business? Any new business? Any public comment? You know, entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting and reconvene in our next?
I move that we adjourn our meeting this evening and reconvene for our next City Council meeting on Monday, April 6th, 2020, 7:00 at City Hall. Second.
Motion's been second. Corral?
Councilmember Swanson?
Aye.
Mavri?
Aye.
Gomez?
Aye.
Newman?
Aye.
Mayor Querom?
Aye. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for attending.